Thank you for joining me last minute for a pop-up town hall meeting. We'll be short and brief, but I did want to take the opportunity to get in front of everybody personally and talk through the memo that I hope everyone's received by now and hopefully a lot of your family members. We are sending all memos out to family members that have an email address listed. We're working to get a full contact of everyone's mailing addresses so we can mail off the information, but the email is much more efficient and much quicker and much more affordable. So, we're going to be working on that to try to get email addresses for all of your family members. I'm sure most of them have that so we can communicate with them on a regular basis. We do have well over 100 family members, if not more, on that list that goes out, but please make sure that you're telling your family members about anything that goes out. So, what I want to talk about today was, and I have, I don't know if you can see on the camera here, Margot, who is our infection control nurse and staff development coordinator here at Springmore. Margot's been a nurse for, I'm not sure how many years, Margot, how many? 25 years. And most recently, were you at UNC, Rex? Or you have worked at? Okay. So, she's worked in long-term care. She's also an educator. So, this is her area of expertise in infection control. Again, she's learning this like everyone else, but she has just been a godsend during this time. Y'all probably heard me talk or speak her name several, several times since this has happened and we use her a lot. She's actually been, not only helped the staff, but also helping family members and residents. There's a lot of questions that come in from family members that want to know things that are really medical and technical that I obviously, you know, don't know as well as Margot does. So, Margot's been nice enough to call some family members back and maybe even some of you. So, she's here today to answer any questions we may have afterwards, but again, please refrain from those until afterwards. I'm hoping that the whole goal to this is just to, hopefully, this was, memo was clear to everybody, but I want to make sure personally in front of you that there are no misunderstandings about anything from the staff or from the residents. So, I'm going to start off. So, it was announced yesterday that we did find out about our first positive COVID-19 case for an employee who works in South Village as a housekeeper. So, we tried to be as specific as possible to relieve any kind of anxiety to other residents that live in North Village or the Health Center or any other place within Springmore. In addition to that, once we found out who the employee was, we were able to, they call contact tracing is the new hot word, contact trace back who that employee had been in touch with as far as resident-wise. So, we personally, a group of Terry, what is it, our housekeeping director, Joyce Isley, who's over our outpatient clinic and home services, and Allison Weaver, our social worker. Terry personally called all of the residents that live here that we contact traced back to, and then Allison and Joyce personally called all the families. So, I got some questions about, were they contacted? Did you let the families know? Well, of course, we did. So, I would hope, and, you know, and being very candid, that you would, y'all would know that we would do that. So, this is very, very important and very sensitive. So, we took a personal approach, obviously, and called the residents personally and their family members. So, they have been aware, they know what's going on, they know what's expected, and they know what to do moving forward. So, of course, that all happened, but I wanted to talk again about how everything happened so there's no misunderstanding. Again, I was disappointed to hear from a couple of residents through second-hand, and this could be not true, and from staff members that we had not disclosed this and was keeping this from everyone. So, I don't know if it's the data put in there that made people think that, but that was very upsetting to us because we have tried, as you know, very hard to make sure that everybody knows everything as much as possible, and perhaps that was just hearsay. At times like this, you hear things and it kind of brings you down. So, hopefully, that's not the case. I do want to clear that up. Again, housekeeper, South Village, was, came to us on the 23rd, which was last Thursday. She came to us and said that she was possibly exposed to the virus from a family member who had been around another family member. So, once we found out that this person was possibly exposed, so I want to highlight, if you have your memo in front of you, the second paragraph, possibly exposed, that is when our red flag went up. The next sentence says that the employee was screened successfully each day when coming into work. So, before the 23rd, she was screened every day, just like every other resident, and showed no symptoms. So, on the 23rd, when we found out that there was possible exposure, that we decided for her to stay home for 14 days. So, that was without confirmation or actual exposure. That was pure precaution that was taken on Margot's part, my part, the director of nursing, and Terry. We all decided that that was the best thing to do, and it was also decided, and by, we followed the Department of Health and Human Services through North Carolina, that's part of their guidelines. So, the 23rd is the date that we found out of possible exposure. We did not find out that she was positive until yesterday, or was that, the memo went out yesterday, Wednesday? So, we did not find out that the resident, excuse me, the employee was positive until, would have been the 28th? Is that right? The 28th of Wednesday. As soon as she found out she was positive, then she called and told us. Once we had the confirmation, that is when we sent out the memo, which was yesterday. Couldn't get it out quick enough, found out late in the evening, and that's when the memo came out. So, again, it was, she's been home for 14 days, she's not home for, she's going to be home for 14 days and has not been here since the 23rd. The good news is she is doing well. She is recovering fine. She had very, very mild symptoms, which is, which is kind of scary because it's hard to tell sometimes if you have any symptoms. She was developing slight mild symptoms, so she went to get tested, and then on the next day, she found out that it was positive. So, again, we have a very honest and very forthright employee who came to us and said she was possibly exposed. So, we took precaution again to not let her come back since the 23rd. During that time, she developed mild symptoms, and we found out Wednesday she was tested positive and will not be back until that 14-day period is up, and she is screened successfully. So, with that said, we contacted all the residents that were affected and all their family members. We've talked to staff. We have sent the same memo that you got, went to all independent family members, we have an email address for, all Stuart Health Center family members, we have an email address for, all of you and all the staff. So, everybody is aware. We want everybody to know, just, and just by the way, every memo I send out goes to those same people every time. So, this was a separate memo that came out. I can honestly and truthfully say, more than anything in my career, I've never felt more prepared to do this, to make this happen than I was on Wednesday. It was, it was just like, okay, we got a case, this is what we do. I mean, we had been talking about it for eight weeks. So, it wasn't like a shock, like, oh, my God, I can't believe somebody's got the coronavirus. It's, we have 550 employees that come and go every day, and not all 550 come every day, but we have 550 employees roughly that could walk through this door on any given day. We have 600 residents here that we serve every day. Some of y'all still come and go to the doctor, to the grocery store, and that is, that is fine. The point is, it's almost inevitable not to ever, someone here get the virus, and there's nothing to be ashamed of. We're one of the largest communities in the state of North Carolina, and to go almost two full months is, I mean, that's unbathomable. I'd be quite honest, surprised we went that long. And I'll also say that I mean this very positively, that I'm very thankful that it was a very young and healthy employee that contacted the virus and is recovering very well than one of you, especially someone in the Health Center, that may not recover as well. So, there's a lot of good things to look at from this point. You know, there's, there's nothing to be, I don't think, down about. It's just trying to make each of you feel confident in what we're doing and what we did. So, that's the whole part, that's the whole point of just having this short kind of pop-up town conference. I think if anyone knows me, y'all know I'm pretty transparent. I'm guilty of probably telling too much at times, but I think that's important because I think you build trust that way. So, of course, we would always be transparent in this, and, you know, we have to report these things. I mean, Margot's called the Health Department and told them about it, so, you know, we have to, we have to do those things as well. So, that is all I have. I really, really hope that clears up any questions, if there were any. I don't know if there were, but I thought it was important to come on the air and for each of y'all to just hear me personally say what I wrote in the memo, just in case you hadn't read it, maybe if you didn't understand it, was a little confused about it. So, for now, that is about all the information I have. We're continuing to do as we have. We are waiting to hear what new restrictions may be loosened or not loosened, and when that happens, we'll decide how we're going to do that. I've said before, we'll be very slow to open things back up, but use common sense when we can to do things to make sure y'all are not totally isolated, you know, for months to come. So, if anyone has any questions and would like to call 7054, I will do my best to try to answer, but if not, again, I have Margot here who can help answer any questions that you have. She's answered a ton of questions for me today, so we do have a call here, so we'll let you guys know what we have.
We anxiously await. Must be long and complicated.
The question that has come up is, was the employee's husband also sent home? And the answer to that is yes.
So, the question is, wearing masks in the halls, is it required? I sent an email out earlier today informing all staff members, if they're in a public part of Springmore, to make sure they have on their mask. Of course, it's been mandatory in the Health Center. Many of us are quarantined to our office. I very rarely go anywhere other than the restroom, and I have not worn my mask anytime I've walked out of my office 30 feet to the restroom, but I've started doing that regularly to help out as much as I can and make people feel more comfortable. The right thing to do, and yes, so that, all the employees in the hallway should be wearing masks. So, they all have been issued masks, y'all have all been issued masks, so I'll request the same out of y'all. If you're in the hallway, please make sure you wear a mask. If you're, when we're in our office, or if we're in a meeting where we're socially distanced apart, we're not going to wear a mask. I'm wearing my mask because I'm Margot, because we're not six feet apart. Holly sitting over here does not have her mask on because she is six feet apart in an open area. So, it is just, you know, got to use that common sense, but yes, we'll have to make sure that the employees do know they should be wearing the mask anytime they're even walking down the hallway in a common or public area.
So, as far as precautions for the housekeepers that may have possibly been exposed to the positive coworker, they have been notified, which, and along with any of the CDC or DHHS recommendations, which is what we are following, they are aware, so they self-monitor. We continue our daily screenings and continue with wearing masks and social distancing. So, wearing the masks, social distancing, and washing your hands is still the best preventative measure that you can take to try and not contract the coronavirus. Simply being aware that you have a possible exposure, which in all honesty, anytime we go out in the public and touch a gas pump handle or go to the grocery store and touch anything, you could have a possible exposure. So, it's just to make one aware and for them to self-monitor.
The question is, can residents get tested if they want? I'll try to tackle this, and then I'll let Margot specify it. You have to call your primary care physician for that. We do not have tests here, and I know that they're very strict on giving out or testing. Again, I'll let her talk about that. I believe if you wanted to be tested, you would call your primary care physician. They will ask you a series of questions to determine if you even qualify to be tested. But Margot, I'm not sure if that's the exact answer.
So, according to, again, the CDC and the Health Department, who I have been in contact with today, the criteria for testing is someone who is symptomatic and has had close prolonged contact with someone who has tested positive. So, again, you can contact your primary physician. I believe if a physician wrote a prescription, that a testing site would have to complete the test. However, the guidelines are that you would be symptomatic in order to get the test. Simply being exposed or being in a high-risk category, apparently, right now is not part of criteria for being tested.
So, that, just, thank you, Margot. That just kind of goes to show, again, to reiterate, when the employee was, when they had possible exposure, that's why they were not tested until six days later, until they displayed symptoms. So, once they displayed symptoms, then they were tested. So, again, that just kind of follows up the whole story of the employee situation.
If I can add one thing that, and I know everyone can get on the CDC website and DHHS and read the things that have come out, and I do realize that things have changed over a period of time as their guidelines widen, when other cases have emerged. One of the things that you'll see is that a person is infectious as early as 48 hours before they show symptoms, up to 14 days. So, if we operate on that assumption, and this coworker exhibited symptoms on Monday, that would mean her 48-hour period started on Saturday. This person was not even on our grounds since the prior Thursday, so there is a great likelihood that she was not even contagious when she was present on the campus. Her 48 hours would have fallen two days after she left campus.
The question is, does the employee get their wages and do they have Medicare? I cannot answer any of those questions pertaining to an employee, but I can tell you she's doing just fine. So, just know she's doing well and just keep praying for her. She's cared for and she's doing fine. So, the question is, if the resident, the residents are uncomfortable with the housekeepers coming in to clean their apartment, will their jobs be at risk? And the answer is no. We made, we determined early on that we were not going to let anybody go for any reason because we need everybody. We still have y'all here, and even though we're doing a modified service, we still need most employees here. This will eventually end, and we will need everybody back full force, so there's no reason not to have anybody. Some examples we have had is with dining. We have a lot of part-time people that work in the dining room in high school, as y'all well know and I know they're very well-liked. A lot of those individuals are young, they go to school, and it's kind of play money. So, they're out of school, they're working from online, and they're not wanting to come to work, and they don't need to come to work because they don't need the money, or their parents may not want them to come to work. So, we have a lot of dining staff by choice, which is part-time, that are not currently working. We don't need them now because of our system in delivering meals, but if they all wanted to work, they could. I do have high school staff members that are still working every day. So, that's a long-winded question to try to reassure you, and I've tried to reassure each staff member that nobody's job is in jeopardy. That's why I've kind of preached that finally, that I'm hoping people feel very grateful to be a part of this community versus a hospital where they get all the glory, where they do lay people off and furlough people, to where we have not done that. So, if you don't want your housekeeper, we had, the last time I've counted, about 10 rooms that did not want to be cleaned. We'll have the housekeepers do something else, and they're not going to lose their job. So, if you're uncomfortable and you don't want a housekeeper coming in, you know, just let them know or let Terry know, and we'll take care of it. Just know they are being screened every day, and I think more now than ever. I'm not saying that's a good thing, but, you know, we finally had a case, it was an employee, everything's going to be fine with her. Maybe everybody's just kind of slapping the face, like, oh, this is real, this could happen. So, you know, I think I was going to be on the Ps and Qs now, even more so than ever. The question is, how many residents have been quarantined and are they on different floors? I'm not going to get into the specifics of that. The residents are all on the same floor. I don't know the answer to that. Just be mindful that the, that everybody has been contacted, they've all been quarantined, and the exact room numbers of all those people, I do not have, but that is, that's something that's really, that's not, is not needed to know. Repeat that again? Okay, so I'm going to let Margot answer this, because I'll get long-winded and want to tell everyone.
So, the question, and mine will be brief. So, the question was, does the Springmore staff know what they need to be doing for the quarantined residents, and do the residents know what they need to be doing? And the answer to that is yes and yes.
We spend an enormous amount of time and resources to make sure that the residents, the staff members not only know what to do, but also make sure they have the resources to do it. So, that goes from the nurse coming from the clinic to do daily checks on those specific residents that we're not going to disclose, to, that's right, to check their temperature every day, to if there's an emergency call at 2:00 in the morning, the guard has to come in, they have all the resources, PPE gown, all that stuff, to help you off the floor or whatever the need may be. So, yes, we have done a very good job, been very thankful through some of our trusted vendors to have a large supply of PPE equipment. So, thank you for asking, but yes, we are well-equipped and they're very well-educated on what to do. So, I'll let Margot answer this. The question was, are we aware, do we know anything about FEMA supplying the governor of the state of North Carolina with tests?
So, it's my understanding and the information that I read most recently about FEMA providing PPE to nursing homes was dealing more with nursing homes that are in hotspots, so New Jersey, New York, and some of those areas that are more concentrated and have had multiples of deaths. The PPE that they are going to supply are going to be in relation to their number of staff. It's going to be a two-week supply, and it will be only allotted to facilities that accept Medicare and Medicaid funds. So, I did not see North Carolina listed in that list, and unfortunately, if it did come to North Carolina, we would not qualify as we don't accept Medicare and Medicaid funds. We don't have, I won't say that we have all the PPE we want, but we have all the PPE we need, and it's looked at on a weekly basis.
That's a good point. A lot of the nursing homes in rural areas that are government-funded, especially through Medicaid, are the ones that struggle a lot for not only money, but the money that turns into to gather resources for equipment like that. So, yeah, they'd be the first ones to get that or hotspot. So, we're blessed to have, like you said, all we need, but I think it's one of those things where you just feel like you can never have enough, so.
Exactly.
Got a call coming through here now. Our normal Brad Dill Day, who normally helps out, is not here today, so we got some fill-ins I need to recognize. Chris Lawyer and Carrie Ritchie from our Wellness Department. So, they are getting in their steps and their exercises by answering the phones and walking to relay the information to our engineer and producer, Daniel, to relay to me. So, we're continuing to try to stay active even during this time of isolation or quarantine, I should say.
Again, that, the question was, someone heard somewhere in the public that anyone could get tested at any point in time. The guidelines that I reflected were just what is the CDC recommendations and the DHHS recommendations. They also defer to private, primary caregivers that if they saw a need, of course, a private care physician can order that. So, if you can, you know, talk to your doctor and talk your doctor into it, you could certainly get tested, but it's not recommended to test when you're asymptomatic. PPE is personal protective equipment, and for healthcare, that involves face masks, like I'm wearing, a gown and gloves. And it can also possibly involve a face shield, and we also have plenty of those. The face shield is primarily if you're going to come in contact with something that's going to splash. So, if we were to get an actual positive case of an employee, or not an employee, I'm sorry, a patient, we do have a unit that we are calling our isolation unit, which is a closed-off area of a hallway with five rooms, and the people that would be tending to those patients would be designated staff that would not take care of other patients, and they would wear full PPE, which would be the face mask, the shield, glove, and gowns when they're caring for those residents.
So, the question is, will this get out to newspapers and media? It should not. I mean, I'm not, if it does, it doesn't bother me, but no, it's, this is all internal. We, what gets out usually to newspapers and media, if there's an outbreak, which is two or more, I believe confirm resident or patient cases. So, that's what you hear in the news. There's a lot of communities, very similar to Springmore, that I can promise you, that have had cases of employees just like we have. I know of three in the triangle. I'm not going to say because that's just, that's not prudent to do, but, but again, it's nothing to be ashamed of. But no, this would not need to be in the news or reported any further than to all the stakeholders, which is our board, each of you, the residents, the staff, and family members. Of course, we report it to the local health department, so we've done all of that. So, yeah. Got another one? Okay. I want to read something real quick, something I saw, and I thought it was interesting to kind of close us today. My son, who's seven years old, has recently got into Harry Potter books, and I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, but Harry Potter is this, I guess, this teenage kid who's like this wizard, and was extremely popular in the 90s and 2000s, and the author was J.K. Rowling, it's kind of a British story. So, I'm sure some of y'all probably have heard of it, or if not, maybe your kids or your grandkids. And he actually just finished reading, well, his mother, she reads these books with him every other night, we take turns, and then during the day when he's doing his schoolwork, The Prisoner of Azkaban, which is the third book in the Harry Potter series. And the question was, and there's a statement- And the question was, and there's a, there's a statement in there that says, happiness can be found even in the darkest of times if only someone remembers to turn on the light. So what I pose to you is, how will you turn on the light in someone's world today? So I think that's a nice takeaway today. How, how, how can you turn on the light in someone's world today? Could you help a resident? Can you pray for the employee that, that tested positive? Can you pray for other residents and the, and other employees that we don't test positive? Can we write a thank you note to someone? Can we just tell a resident, thank you for maybe picking up the mail for you or something? So anyway, those little things go a long way. They have gone a long way for me, so, so let's continue to keep a positive attitude. Don't let the light go out. I'm, you're starting to see light at the end of the tunnel, and I think things will, well, I know things will get better. It's taken a little longer than probably y'all expected, but let's try to remember to keep that light on. So we will, we will send out, Holly's going to send out probably not a recap of this, the recap's in the memo, I just wanted to personally tell y'all about it, but any questions that was asked, she'll send those out, and we'll make sure that y'all get those, that y'all have those, and then any other information that would happen or updates, we'll send out in a memo, and if not, we will make sure that we're back here next Wednesday at 2:00 for the next Town Hall meeting. Thank you very much. Hope you have a wonderful weekend, and God bless you in Springmore.